I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Can someone please read the certification statement from closed session?
Whereas the Madison County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, therefore be it resolved that the Madison County School Board hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Ms. Patterson, can you pull the board?
Mrs. Allen?
I certify.
Mr. Marks?
I certify.
Mr. Sheets? Oh, sorry, he's not here. Mr. Wingate?
I certify.
Mrs. Collier?
I certify.
Thank you. Can you please join us right now for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please join us now for a moment of silence. Thank you. So tonight is the board's reorganization meeting at the beginning, so that's why I've been leading the meeting thus far, but now we will move to the portion of the meeting where we elect the officers. The first will be the chairman. So the floor is now open for nominations for chairman of the Madison County School Board for 2023. Do I hear a nomination?
I have nomination. I would like to nominate Ms. Nita Collier to be the chair.
Okay. Are there any further nominations? If there are no further nominations, I hereby declare the nominations closed. The vote will now be taken. Those in favor of Nita Collier for chairman of the Madison County School Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, four to zero, and Nita Collier is elected chairman. So if you'll give us just a second, we're going to adjust up here.
Musical chairs. You stay.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Humble colleagues. Thank you all.
All right. We will continue to organize the board. Soon as my computer works. All right. So the next election will be for vice chairman, and the floor is open for nominations for vice chairman of the Madison County School Board for 2023. Do I hear a nomination?
I nominate Chris Wingate.
Are there any further nominations? If there are no further nominations, I hereby declare the nominations closed. The vote will now be taken. Those in favor of Chris Wingate for vice chairman of the Madison County School Board for 2023, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Congratulations. And now we move into representatives to various regional and local boards that represents Madison County, and the first one is the election of an officer to represent and an alternate to the Piedmont Regional Education Program. The floor is now open for nominations for the representative to prep of the Madison County, for the Madison County School Board for 2023. Do I hear a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Nita Collier to be the rep, well, we don't, do we want to, do you want to do an alternate same time?
No, we have to do separate.
Separately.
Okay. The Piedmont Regional Education Program. Are there any further nominations? If no further nominations, I hereby declare the nominations closed. The vote will now be taken. Those in favor of Nita Collier for representative to prep of the Madison County School Board for 2023, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And now we'll go on to the alternate representative for prep in case I can't be there. The floor is now open for nominations for an alternate representative to prep of the Madison County School Board for 2023. Do I hear a nomination?
I'll be interested in doing it.
Okay. I nominate Mr. Marks for the alternate for that.
If no further nominations, if no further nominations, I hereby declare the nominations closed. The vote will now be taken. Those in favor of Greg Marks for alternate representative to prep of the Madison County School Board for 2023, please say aye.
Aye.
Welcome to prep.
Thank you.
All right. Our next representative, this is two representatives, and we can do it in the same nomination, and this is to the CIP Committee, which is the Capital Improvement Plan Committee for Madison County. Oh, I'm sorry. First mistake. I hit go too fast. Oh, thank you, guys. So we'll back up and do a representative and an alternate to Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School first. And I will open the floor for nominations to the, for the board's representative to Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School Board for 2023. Do I hear a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Allen to be the representative for the Blue Ridge School.
Are there any further nominations? If no further nominations, I hereby declare the nominations closed. The vote will be taken. Those in favor of Mrs. Karen Allen as the board's representative to the Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School Board for 2023, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Congratulations. And we'll do the alternate representative to the Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School Board. The floor is now open for nominations for the board's alternate representative to Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School Board for 2023. Do I hear a nomination?
I nominate Chris Wingate.
Chris Wingate has been nominated to serve as the board's alternate representative to Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School. Are there any further nominations? If no further nominations, I hereby declare the nominations closed. The vote will now be taken. Those in favor of Chris Wingate as the board's alternate representative to the Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School Board for 2023, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Congratulations. Now we'll move into Capital Improvement Plan Committee. And this again is two folks, and Mr. Sheets is not here tonight, but he did express interest in being on the CIP Committee.
So do you want a nomination?
So, yes. The floor is now open for nominations for the board's representative to the CIP Committee for 2023.
I nominate Charlie Sheets for, as a representative to the Capital Improvement Plan Committee.
Okay. We can do two at the same time.
I'll be willing to help. Sheets will help.
I nominate Mrs. Allen to be the alternate.
Are there any other further nominations? If no further nominations, I hereby declare the nominations closed. The vote will now be taken. Those in favor of Mr. Charlie Sheets and Mrs. Karen Allen as the board's representative to the CIP Committee for 2023, please say aye.
Aye.
And now, we will do representatives to the board of supervisors, and these, this is two as well, two folks as well. Okay. So the floor is now open for two school board members to serve as representatives to the Madison County Board of Supervisors for 2023. Do I hear a nomination?
I'll do it.
Okay. So these two.
Is that like you Karen if Greg and I did that? Does that sound good to you if Greg and I did that?
Of course.
You'd make the nomination then.
Oh, okay. I will do that. I will do that. Running out of people, are we? Okay. I'd like to nominate, let's see, Greg Marks and Christopher Wingate to be the representative to the board of supervisors and alternate.
Are there any further nominations? If there are no further nominations, I hereby declare the nominations closed. The vote will now be taken. Those in favor of Chris Wingate and Greg Marks as the board's representatives to the board of supervisors for 2023, please say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. All right. We don't memorize all this stuff. We have the computer to tell us what to say. So I'm just waiting on my computer. It's spinning. There we go. Okay. So the next election of officers is the representative and the alternate to the Fall Virginia School Boards Association meeting for 2023. A delegate and an alternate serves, represents Madison to the annual 2023 Annual VSBA Conference. Historically, we don't have to do this, but historically it's been the chairman and the vice chairman that represent the Virginia School, represent Madison at the Virginia School Boards Convention. We don't have to do that, but if we choose to do that, I'll open the floor. I'm happy to do that.
I would like to nominate.
I got to open the floor. Hold on.
Oh, sorry.
The floor is now open for nominations for school, two school board members to serve as a voting delegate and an alternate for the VSBA Delegate Assembly and Regional Meeting of the 2023 VSBA Convention. Okay.
I don't think I can get all that out, but I'd like to nominate Nita Collier and Christopher Wingate to be the representatives and the alternate to the Fall VSBA Conference.
Are there any further nominations? If there are no further nominations, I hereby declare the nominations closed. The vote will now be taken. Those in favor of Nita Collier as the delegate and Chris Wingate as the alternate delegate, voting delegates for the 2023 VSBA Annual Conference in November, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Congratulations to us. I promise it's not going to take forever, y'all. Here we go. The next thing that we have to vote on is the clerk of the school board, and I believe we're leaving that the same. So the floor is now open for nominations for the clerk of the school board of the Madison County School Board for 2023. Do I hear a nomination?
I nominate Mrs. Patterson to be the clerk of the school board.
Mrs. Liz Patterson has been nominated to serve as the clerk of the school board. Are there any further nominations? If there are no further nominations, I hereby declare the nominations closed. The vote will now be taken. Those in favor of Mrs. Liz Patterson for clerk of the school board, clerk of the Madison County School Board for 2023, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Congratulations. Thank you for hanging in there with us. All right, congratulations. Thank you for hanging in there with us. You're number 18, is that what you said? She's been with us for 18 years. All right, deputy clerk of the school board. The floor is now open for nominations for the deputy clerk of the Madison County School Board for 2023. Do I hear a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Tina Crop as the deputy clerk of the board.
Tina Crop has been nominated to serve as a deputy clerk of the Madison County School Board. Are there any further nominations? If there are no further nominations, I hereby declare the nominations closed. The vote will now be taken. Those in favor of Mrs. Tina Crop for deputy clerk of the Madison County School Board for 2023, please say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Thank you for hanging in there with us.
Amen.
All right, the next, um, and the last one is our advisory committees. We have several. Um, we have a Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee. We have a Family Life Advisory Committee. We have Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee. We have the Special Education Advisory Committee. We have the Diversity, Opportunity, and Inclusion Task Force, and we have the alternate for the Parent Community Partnership and Citizenship Committee. Last year, you guys can see who was on those committees. Um, I do know that Mr. Sheets also expressed interest in the Career and Technical Education Committee. Would anybody like to be his alternate? Chris, do you want to stay there?
I'm happy to unless somebody else wants it, wants to do it. Am I interested? I'm happy to stay if nobody else is.
Okay, all right, then I'll open the floor. Um, and I think we just have to approve these, right? Do we, we don't have to go through the whole, okay. So, um, Charlie Sheets and Chris Wingate, we will approve as the, um, representative and the alternate for Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee for 2023. And then Family Life, currently it's Karen and Chris.
I would see Greg, I know Greg is kind of involved in that. Cole Pepper has a lot more knowledge than me, so if you're interested in it, Greg, might be better than me primarily.
I would be willing to serve.
So do we want to switch that around since you have an interest in it so that I would be the alternate and you could be the?
That's fine.
Would work for you? Okay.
Okay, so we'll make note of that. And then the Special Education Advisory Committee, currently that's myself and Karen as the alternate. Um, I'm interested.
Yeah, gifted.
Gifted and talented, sorry. Gifted and talented advisory is Chris Wingate and Nita as the alternate.
I wouldn't mind serving on that. It doesn't matter which one.
I'm trying to give it up.
I'm happy to do it with you Karen. If you want to be primary, I'm happy either way.
Either way suits me too. Yeah.
You have more experience than me. You want to primary?
I'll do primary. Um, I'll go ahead and do it and then you can be the alternate if that suits you.
Sounds good.
Okay, so Karen will be primary on the Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee and Chris will be the alternate. And then we'll go to the Special Education Advisory Committee. Currently, it, well, previously, it was myself and Karen as the alternate. And I'm interested in continuing to serve on the Special Education Advisory Committee. You guys know I have a passion for that. So I'm happy to, to stay there. Karen, are you okay with being the alternate?
I am. I'm, I'm, do we want to put, I mean, I know Mr. Sheets isn't here, but I don't want to leave him.
Oh, that is a good idea.
That'd be a good one for him as an alternate.
Charlie Sheets.
Doesn't matter how.
We should make him do everything.
We can make him do whatever he wants, whatever we want to do.
That is a good, that is a good idea. He could be a good alternate for that.
Okay, so myself and Charlie will serve on the Special Education Advisory Committee. Um, the Diversity, Opportunity, and Inclusion Task Force, currently it's Chris Wingate and Karen Allen as the alternate. Is that the will of the board?
I would, I would, I mean, I would, I'd rather, I'm more interested, I'm interested particularly in the, in the new one, the parent community and citizenship. I have some ideas about that. So if the, if the board, if there's interest, I'd rather do that and step away from the diversity one, let someone else do that.
I have interest in the parent community as well.
Well, then I'll do the Diversity, Opportunity, and Inclusion Task Force.
And I'll be the alternate. I'm happy to be the alternate to that.
Unless, I mean, do we have it kind of equally dispersed with Charlie?
I think so. So Charlie has two.
Yeah.
I have two.
If I do the parent.
You have two.
I'll have one, two, three, it's fine.
I think we're pretty equal.
Yeah, okay.
Is that okay?
Oh, yeah.
So Karen will serve as the primary for the Diversity, Opportunity, and Inclusion, and I'll be her alternate. And then the Parent Community Partnership and Citizenship Committee, this is a new committee, and are we doing a primary and an alternate? Ms. Graham, yes? Primary and alternate for Parent Community Partnership and Citizenship.
You're interested in it?
Since you can kind of help start that, you should probably be primary.
Okay, so Mr. Wingate will be the primary representative and Greg will be the alternate. Now, can we vote on all these at the same time, just as we just stated them? Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve all of those decisions for all of the advisory committees.
I'll move that we vote to approve all the people we just talked about for the advisory committees.
And a second, please?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And the motion carries. Okay, our next action is the approval of Personnel Matters and the Addendum for January the 12th, 2023 to include resignations, substitute appointments, coaching stipends, and sponsor stipends as presented. So I will open the floor for a motion to approve all of that.
Motion to approve?
And a second?
Second.
We have approve and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And that motion carries. And the next action is the Consent Agenda, and that's to approve January 12th, 2023 Consent Agenda as presented.
I make a motion to approve the, the January 12th, 2023 Consent Agenda as presented, which would be the operating expenses for January 2023. The January 2023 Fund Five expenses, expenses, January 23 sentences for Fund Two, the food service expenses, and the expenditures as of December the 31st, 2022. And the minutes, I'm sorry. And the minutes of January the 12th, right? January 12th.
December.
December, meaning what day was that?
The 12th.
Was that?
December the 12th.
Ah, yes, December the 12th, 2022, minutes.
All right, we have a motion and we need a second. And we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. And now we get to the fun part of the meeting, which is our recognitions and presentations. And the first presentation is our Senior of the Month. Ms. Graham?
Thank you. As Ms. Winham comes forward to announce the January Senior of the Month, we just want to remind everyone that the Senior of the Month program showcases a graduating senior each month for the school year based on their academics, their extracurricular activities, and their service to others. And then they will be recognized once again at the end of the school year at a banquet where they will have the opportunity to recognize an educator that's had an impact on their lives since they've been with Madison Schools at that banquet, and they'll get recognized again as well. So, Ms. Winham?
It is my pleasure to introduce you to Aleah Ailer, Madison County High School senior who has been selected as January Senior of the Month. Aleah was selected a Senior of the Month for January because of her leadership in organizing and executing the first winter community event, our Winter Wonderland at Madison County High School. This event was sponsored by the MCHS Student Principal Cabinet and was free of any financial cost to over 50 families who joined us on the morning of December 17th, 2022. This was a Saturday. Aleah spent countless hours from beginning to end ensuring that the event was a success and sought out donations from the community to enhance the experience. She committed herself to being present for the setup and cleanup of the event and not just all the fun parts. Aleah organized a picture with Santa experience so that there was a strategic sign-in process that allowed each child to receive free photos with our jolly Santa, and she ensured that each family was greeted with cheer as they signed in and received a name tag for their child so that they could be recognized by name. Over 40 high school students volunteered to lead activity stations for the students, which included face painting, fingernail painting and design, personalized ornament creations, handwritten letters to Santa, cookie decorating, reindeer food, hot chocolate, winter coloring, and activity sheets, while a comfortable seating area was provided for children wishing to relax and watch the Polar Express. All of this took place in our high school cafeteria, and there is an enormous sense of community and mountainous pride felt on this day because of Aleah's dedication to the event. Aleah has attended Madison County Public Schools throughout her K-12 educational career and is on track to graduate with honors this May with plans to attend a four-year university studying biomedical science and a pre-dental track. Aleah holds various leadership positions this year to include co-president of MCHS Beta Club, chair of the Student Principal Cabinet, and is on the Class Leadership Council for the class of 2023. She is an athlete and amazing vocalist at her church, which we all get to experience through her mom's Facebook posts. I still want her to sing for us. And she has a true desire to serve the community and make a difference wherever she is. Aleah served as a student assistant to our athletic trainer in the fall while she was out of season for softball. And during this time, she also was enrolled in our CTE/CNA program where she received her CNA certification in December. As evident, Aleah has embraced so many opportunities that we offer for students to be prepared for their life after high school, and she's a valuable asset to our school community. I share this brief bio with great pride tonight because her success and future accomplishments are not only a celebration for MCHS or for me as a high school principal, but truly one for our entire school division. As the weather gets warmer, I invite all of you to attend a MCHS softball game to see her home run hitting skills in the action. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Aleah. Oh. Board members, you guys want to have any remarks?
Probably maybe the last time I get to speak to you personally, but I could see something in you when you were in elementary school. And I'm glad to see that spark that you have had, and it sounds like you continue to have. And I'm glad to see that remain, and I hope it stays with you the rest of your days because we are only going to be the ones that benefit from the things that you will bring to us and the things you'll do for your community and everybody that comes in contact with you. So congratulations, you deserve this very much, and I'm very proud of you.
Congratulations. Thank you for your hard work. All right, our next celebration is Employee of the Month. Ms. Graham?
Yes, tonight's presentation is going to start with our Assistant Principal of Alternative Education. Mrs. Gail Temple is going to come forward to announce tonight's Employee of the Month.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to ask Mr. Stuart Dean to join me at the podium. It is an honor for me to stand before you tonight and recognize Mr. Stuart Dean as the January Employee of the Month. As is true of his nature, Mr. Dean's first response when I told him of this honor was, oh, no, Gail, no, you didn't. The limelight is not what he desires, but it is what he deserves. Mr. Dean has been with the Madison County School System for 22 years, but a part of the all ed team for only four years. However, he has been an integral factor in the success of many of our students as they make their way through our program. Mr. Dean is able to form positive relationships with students, some who have had challenges along their educational journey. Early in the school year, I noticed how persistent he was in trying to reach a student from last year who was and still is very close to finishing the GED program, but had not returned this year. He even went on a home visit in hopes of convincing this young man to return. I have watched him sit one-on-one with a student whose living situation was very complicated and impacting his academics, and worked out a plan for moving forward. He listens as students pour out or vent their anger and frustration without passing judgment. One situation recently that really touched me was as follows. We had a young man preparing to go to the GED Testing Center in Louisa to take his first GED test. While the student traditionally showed no fear about anything, I could tell he was nervous by the questions he kept asking me. Having never gone to the center before, I could not answer them all, and walking back to my office, I casually mentioned that the student seemed a little nervous. Within a short while, as I was walking back through, I saw Mr. Dean sitting with the student explaining the process so as to ease his nervousness. He did this all very privately, and though it was something small, it had a huge impact on the student. The student passed the test and was very proud of himself for doing so. It is for reasons like this that I am so proud and honored to present Stuart Dean as the January Employee of the Month. Don't go anywhere. I guess, I guess I can hug you like Betty Jo Hume.
Congratulations, Stuart.
Congratulations, Stuart.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Mr. Dean, congratulations. And I've worked with you as well, and I know that everything Ms. Temple said is absolutely true. You've made a difference in the life of so many of our struggling learners, and I know they appreciate it, and I know that they don't even know yet how much they will appreciate the fact that you made a difference in their life. Thank you.
Appreciate the wee hours that you get up to help our students learn how to drive as he comes there early.
A quick, a quick funny story about Mr. Stuart. I was, no, it's not funny, not bad at all. It was, no, no, nothing, nothing from the deep past. I was, I'm coaching a youth, my daughter's youth basketball league, the Madison Rec thing, and we were, we were playing the other day, and one of the, some of the siblings were there, and I just asked one of the students there how he, how they liked school. And they said, I don't like school, but I love Mr. Dean. And it's awfully, awfully sweet. He said that completely without any kind of pushing or anything. That was the first thought on his mind, it was about you and the, and the work that you did, so thank you.
And this is just a good opportunity as well because I'm glad that Gail worded it this way. You said the all ed team, and tonight we do have the all ed team here tonight with Gail and Vanessa and Stuart here, and they just deserve as a whole a shout out because they do a lot of relationship building and intensive support to help a lot of students. Thank you.
So I have a personal story, and I'm not going to cry. Stuart, before he was in all ed, he was a special ed coordinator for my oldest ed. Even after he graduated, Stuart got him a job. Stuart got him a job. And he still did that job today, and he loves it. Sorry. Thank you, Stuart, for all you do. All right, enough sappiness. All right, we have one more special recognition. And, come on, computer. Ms. Graham?
Yes, Ms. Winham is going to come forward and present the next award or recognition. The word's already been given.
I'm going to ask Dr. Matchin to come join me. And I have tears, but not because of him. So it's so exciting. I'm crying so happy you're coming up here.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. I have a real soft heart, as everybody probably knows.
It's bad.
So this is Dr. Matchin. And Dr. Matchin is a teacher for me at the high school. And he was our Teacher of the Year last year. So he already has a lot of great stuff going on, which you know about. In this first semester of the school year, I never got to see him because he has been teaching middle school science. As you know, we have some science teaching vacancies at the middle school. And so we've used our science department at the high school and worked with the master schedule. So he spent the entire first semester teaching middle school. So aside from the award that I'm about ready to talk about, it takes a lot for a teacher to just step outside of their comfort zone and be in, having that servant heart to help somewhere that they didn't intend to be. And I think he did a wonderful job. Ms. Wilson can attest to that. But we're so happy to have him back at the high school this semester. But we do have two other teachers that are pushing down to support for the rest to take over the classes. So then he can teach DE Geography now. So we went from middle school science to geology, not geography, no rocks, geology. So anyway, so what I want to talk about tonight is he recently was recognized for his contributions to science education. He was selected this fall by the Virginia Association of Science Teachers to receive the 2022 Recognition in Science Education Award in the Earth Science category. The awards are presented to outstanding educators at all levels. Matchin was formally recognized in November at a ceremony in Williamsburg. And I'm going to quote, he reads, this is what his quote was. "It is an honor to be awarded by my peers for my contributions to earth science education in Virginia. It recognizes my contribution to the success of the vast quarry visits in the summer of 2022, service to the Virginia Department of Education, developing earth science curriculum for the state and my time as an earth science teacher in Madison County." So this is just awesome. Like, we're a little county on the map, but we also have, you know, a stellar educator that our students are really lucky to have. And I'm very fortunate and blessed for him to lead our science department as instructional team leader. So he deserves all the recognition he can get. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you for everything you do for our children, too. Glad to have you back at MCHS. And thank you for being willing to go down and work at the middle school, too. So congratulations.
Congratulations, and thank you. Okay. And the next presentation is the Wetzel Middle School STEM Program Presentation, which I'm excited for. And our amazing students back there, I think, are going to come show us all kinds of cool things, right? Ms. Graham, you want to introduce them?
Yes, here comes Mr. Handel, and he will introduce his students for us.
All right, thank you, everyone. We have here a group representing several of my different eighth grade, what we call robotic design classes, which is the eighth grade STEM course. We have Clarence Hawkins Jr., we got Ethan Warden, we have Quinlan DeGraff, we have Josh Sarver. I'm getting there. And Morgan Cole. And these guys here have built two robots for part of our Battle Bot unit, where in the course of our program, we, they learn how to use robots and the Lego Technic system to overcome challenges that there's no instruction manual for. You're presented a challenge, and it's up to you to follow the technical design principles in order to construct a robot and program it with the necessary sensors to complete the job. So what I wanted to do briefly is give these guys an opportunity to talk a little bit about their two robots here. We have this robot right here, which was nicknamed from their team, the Destroyer. And on the other one over here, we have Big Wheel, which is easily recognized by the big wheel on the front. So why don't we have Team Destroyer come up real quick? And you guys discuss how you guys came about building that robot.
So we did some research about this. And this was like the best design to destroy the other robots.
I made the front part of that right there, the spinner thingy, which like basically just destroys parts off the other robot's team robot.
I made the surround part where they can't take your cords and your wheels off to make sure the other team can't take yours out of the square.
And Clarence, can you briefly describe how that robot functions? What does it do?
The robot's made to destroy other robots with the spinner in the front. And it has enough speed to push it out.
Thank you, sir. All right, Big Wheel Team, what you got for us?
We designed our robot to just push the other team out of the circle and be able to take a hit pretty good. At the end, we tried to put a spinner on it, but we didn't quite have enough time to finish it. So we just kind of left it there how it was.
So guys, was your robot using primarily offensive strategies or defensive strategies?
Mostly defensive.
So in the course of their curriculum, it also, because the unit is in of itself almost like an exercise or a game, they actually provide a framework and then allow them to operate within that framework as a team. And so even though there's no instruction manual, what we are able to do is say, well, hey, we've learned through the course of this curriculum that we found that certain, what we would call offensive tactics, are highly effective or not effective. And then we have certain defensive tactics that are suggestively highly effective or perhaps not very effective at all. A great example of that is the walls that you see around the robots and of course, using spinners as offensive capabilities. We'd also like to be able to demonstrate briefly how these robots work. We set up what we call a Battle Bot Arena, which is literally just a rectangle that is defined by blue painter's tape. And using the sensors on the robot, they programmed the robots to keep themselves inside of the box using sensors on the front and with the express purpose of not being the first one out. So your goal is to push the other robot out of the ring by any means necessary. And much like the TV show Battle Bots, that is taken as far as it can, as example by things like the spinners. Unfortunately, we can't have it out on the front because the robots were designed to run on the white tile of our classroom floor. And the black tile is the opposite of what the sensor is expecting. So what we have done is we have put it behind you guys. You probably noticed the blue square we got back there. So while, of course, it won't be able to be on the live stream, we'd like to demonstrate that for you now briefly, if that's okay.
Certainly. I can't wait.
Yep, go ahead and grab your robots. Let's go around the other side.
Sorry, public. We get to see the cool stuff. But Mr. Marx is videoing it, so maybe he'll put it on social media. Board members, do you guys have any questions or comments for our students?
Young men, how long did that take you to put this together and get it programmed, roughly? Now, did you do anything after school with that as well? Or just only in class?
Only in class.
That's very impressive. That's really neat. I think my son would be, he's going to want to do this immediately now that I showed this to him. That's amazing.
I will piggyback off of that, though, that previously William Wetzel Middle School has participated in First Lego League, which is a competitive course, actually sponsored by Lego, that uses these robots in a competitive environment to solve challenges, often while learning about important issues. Back when I was in middle school and I participated in First Lego League, we were learning about things like clean energy and nanotechnology that was supposed to improve our lives and the future and things like that. We are looking at going back into that in the future, and we'll be using robots like these to do that, which that will be an after-school, probably after-school.
And is that a local? Do they have local, like, competitions?
It's regional and then state. And then there's a national, and it goes all the way to world.
Oh, wow. Nice.
Do we have, do we have the resources you need to do those things? I mean, to compete in those competitions?
Yeah, we actually got a lot of support in previous years before I was a STEM teacher. We have a full complement of NXTs, which are in the process of being phased out. We have some EV3s. We're currently waiting on the Lego Company. They're doing some adjustments on what the, they're going to make a new robot now. So we're looking to see where that is at. But we are looking at potentially acquiring some more EV3s because these guys have definitely seen some action over the years and just getting some parts. So we're in a good position, and we're looking to see if we can improve that position because we got some big shoes to fill. When we were in First Lego League, we were bringing home first-place awards. So we're looking to see if we can be as competitive as possible.
And then do we, both the middle school and high school, do we partner with UVA or Virginia Tech in engineering STEM stuff at all? And do we do that at all? I know, we used to go to Virginia Tech back a long time ago. We used to go to Virginia Tech for STEM stuff. Does high school do that, Mrs. Winham, at all? Thank you.
And I just wanted to thank everybody for being here this evening and to demonstrate that for you all. And I really want to congratulate Mr. Handel. This is his first year teaching, and he has just soared. He is one of the most well-known classes. He teaches STEM and then, of course, robotics design. And students are just elated to show up to his classes. As you can see, the excitement. And so we're very fortunate to have him. And I wanted to say thank you for that. Thank you.
Yeah, guys, thank you for sharing that with us tonight. That's awesome.
Thanks for choosing Madison.
That is very cool.
Yep, yep.
All right, our next item on our agenda is public comment time. This is a time for the public to address the board. You are welcome to come to the podium, one at a time, to state your name and what part of the county you are from. And you can share your comments with us. You will have three minutes to share your comments. Would anybody like to address the board? Yeah, the robots were the highlight of the board meeting.
I'm Mike Sherman from the Novum Mary of Madison. At the beginning of any new venture, when you're starting over, it's always good to just look back at the basics. So you're beginning a new time as a school board, new chairman, a chairperson with a new board member. So it's good to just look back and look at the basics. Well, with a school board, your basic question is, why are you doing government-sponsored education? And then we go back to our foundation for that answer. And that's in the Northwest Ordinance, which was one of the very first bills that our first Congress had passed back in 1787. And they answered that question. Religion, morality, and knowledge being necessary to good government and the happiness of mankind, schools and the means of education shall forever be encouraged. So why did government first start sponsoring schools? Because religion, morality, and knowledge are necessary for good government and for the happiness of mankind. We've continued that in our code of Virginia. Going back to basics, we have the rights of parents in Code 1240.1. A parent has a fundamental right, not just, you know, one of the many rights, but a fundamental right to make decisions concerning the upbringing, education, and care of the parent's child. They have the fundamental right. They then delegated that right to y'all. Then next, parents have that right, but they also have, anytime you have a right, you have a corresponding responsibility. Each parent, this is 22.1279.3, each parent of a student enrolled in a public school has a duty to assist the school in enforcing the standards of student conduct. And it goes on from there. Then, again, religion, morality, and knowledge being necessary, we have the code that says there is to be an emphasis on moral education. It says, "The entire scheme of instruction in the public schools shall emphasize moral education." Then in the family life curriculum or education, which tends to get hit a lot, well, it shouldn't because it says that the benefits, challenges, responsibilities, and value of marriage for men, women, children, and communities, the value of family relationships, abstinence education, the value of postponing sexual activity, benefits of adoption as a positive choice. All those things are so important. And then it ends, the sheet that I gave you of the basics ends with the character education, which I believe y'all have really been talking about this last time. And it looks like you're going to be again. So just going back to the basics helps encourage you to do what I know that y'all want to be doing. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Devlin Alfonso of the Radiant. First, I must state that I remain strongly opposed to the book banning policy passed at the previous board meeting. This policy is a clear overreach of power and an attempt to enforce your values on students regardless of their personal values or their parents' values. Fanning books is also especially pointless in this case when half the students in our high school can't even read the books you are removing from the library. We have a problem in our schools, a problem which members of this board have ignored. There are glaring achievement gaps between our schools and the state average and between our black and white students within our school system. I agree with the statement- I agree with the statement made at the last meeting that our black students are not less intelligent or capable than our white students. However, I don't think that ignoring that glaring gap between these groups will solve the problem. It was stated that black homeschooled kids perform better than publicly educated kids. It was asserted that this was simply because they were expected to perform better, so they did. Higher expectations may be present in homeschooling environments. But there are other things there that are not largely present in homeschooling environments. So bullying, racism. Could our students of color and lower socioeconomic status experience more stress in middle and high school due to social pressure and bullying? Is the culture in those schools dramatically different from the culture in our primary and elementary schools where these gaps are not so glaring? We need to know what our students are experiencing in the middle and high schools. The only way we will know this is to listen to students and teachers. I propose that the school board holds a public forum where students and teachers can express their experiences within the middle and high schools. This should be a place for you as the board and for us as the community to listen without putting our personal opinions into the mix. We need to acknowledge our problems in order to fix them. Removing books and ignoring obvious achievement gaps are not going to solve any of the problems that our students and teachers face. We need to face our problems head-on and work together to try to solve them. Please consider a student-teacher open forum where you listen without speaking. Then set aside your personal agendas and work towards solutions to the clear and present problems within our schools.
Thank you for sharing.
My name is Karina Barden and I live in Wolf Town. Believing with you that religion is a matter which lies solely between man and his God, that he owes account to none other for his faith or his worship, that the legitimate powers of government reach actions only, not opinions, I contemplate with sovereign reverence that act of the whole American people which declared that their legislature should make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, thus building a wall of separation between the church and state. Thomas Jefferson, January 1st, 1802, from his letter to the Danbury Baptist. I have long appreciated the separation of church and state as I know that it keeps the government from telling pastors what to preach. It means none of us are forced to attend worship services or practice religions that we do not agree with. It also means that the Protestant, Catholic, agnostic, atheist, and pagan members of our community, along with people of any other belief system, do not need to be compelled to kill each other in the name of religion over changes in political leadership. That we all have the constitutional right to believe and practice, or not, any faith we choose is a tremendous gift. How could we ever think of surrendering that freedom? With that freedom comes the understanding that we do not get to force our religious ideologies on anybody else. If parents choose to seek faith-based education for their kids, they have every right to do so. But this is a secular, public school system in the United States of America. This is not a theocracy. Literature is not against my religious beliefs or the beliefs of many people in this district. So why should our kids be limited in what they can read because of somebody else's beliefs? Furthermore, I do not agree with saying that letting kids read literature with any amount of sexual content is grooming them. And by the way, I'm very concerned with how far that line of thinking may go. How invasive do you intend to become? I have read The Interview with a Vampire: Handmaid's Tale, The Bluest Eye, and I'm almost finished with Snow Falling on Cedars. I don't actually believe that this book banning is about protecting kids. I believe that there are things that some of you don't want people to think about and that the fear mongering around sex is just the tool you're using to keep people divided and not thinking about what? There are things you don't want the public to know, and I intend to know them. Thank you for the reading list.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to share?
Hi, I'm Mark Oates from Arora. I would just like to express my support for what has been discussed in a few meetings of volunteers and how we could possibly utilize volunteers to support our schools. Overall, in the United States, or at least what I know in this area, volunteer work has declined in the last 20 years. You know, local hospitals have, they no longer have volunteer organizations that, you know, would spend hours and hours and account for upwards of half a million dollars' worth of work going toward the organization. So there is a tremendous benefit if a volunteer organization could be started. You think, you know, a teacher does so much during the day, including bus duty, where planning time could substitute. Most of them would rather have some planning time than doing bus duty, especially this time of year when it's cold and rainy. So I just support that and would like to see some interest, if there is any interest in that, in that aspect. I would also like to thank the board for their actions on the books and their actions in promoting excellence in education and how we provide the best environment and the best education for our children. So thank you.
Thanks for sharing. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okeydoke. We will move on then to the capital improvement presentation. And I believe Dr. Stacy Timmons is here, Supervisor of Facilities, and he will share some information with us.
Yes, ma'am.
Nice to officially meet you.
Nice to officially meet the rest of you as well. So good e, can you hear with this? Is it okay?
Good to see you, guys.
Good to see you, good. Good evening to the board and the staff that's present. I appreciate the opportunity to present the facilities and projects update this evening. Before I start, I just wanna say that I'm truly blessed and I'm very proud to be a part of the Madison team. It's been a great experience thus far. I arrived in July and have nothing but positive things to say. And the cooperation between the schools, the county, and Parks and Rec is just amazing and unprecedented from what I've seen in other places. So you've got something special going on here, and I just wanted to say that out loud for people to hear.
Thank you for sharing.
Yes, ma'am. Bear with me as we go through this. I'm gonna be brief and just kinda give you some highlights. Feel free to stop me and ask questions, or we could even do it at the end, however you wanna do it. So I've tried to tell a story tonight with pictures. This is Madison County High School, obviously. So since we've been, since I've been here, we've gotten a lot accomplished. The school system has basketball goals, the four inside gym basketball goals, the three outside, a total of seven basketball goals were replaced, which were sorely needed. The pickleball courts worked with Ms. Winham and a contractor there. Those looked great, turned out great. They came with movable nets so that you can still use the basketball court. So great dual use for that facility and I'm sure the students, and I know some folks after school hours are utilizing those pickleball courts. So it's a great thing for the schools and the community. If we can go back one. Boiler maintenance, I wanna talk a little bit about. I put it on here. I showed a picture of one of our guys doing some work. But we're gonna talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. Down at the last picture, what you see is depicting all of the new LED lighting in the fieldhouse. We're doing some upgrades there as we have time and as money is available. So Mr. Graham has found funding for the lighting, so all the lights in the fieldhouse are new LED. We've signed a contract with a plumber to replace all the fixtures and add hot water in areas where there should have been hot water to start with in that fieldhouse. The next things we're gonna look at doing will be redoing the floor, taking up all the old paint. As you know, the cleats will tear that up, so we can't go back with that. We're gonna go back with some kind of stain, is what we're looking at at this point. So that it may scratch, but we can just put some, re-stain it, and that's gonna work out a lot better for the division. And then we're also gonna look at painting the inside when all of this is done. It's kind of a last step. And our facility staff, there's some talk. And when I first got here, we looked and there were no lockers in the JV locker room. And I'm told that those were taken out by previous staff because at that time, that room was being used as a film room. So what we've done, we've bought the lumber and staff is actually in the process as they have time between work orders and they're rebuilding lockers for that JV locker room, which are sorely needed. So, you know, kudos to the staff for their work there. Okay, next slide. You've probably heard some of this from our Capitol Planning Committee members. There's been an exhaust smell that's been going on for some time. Again, prior to me being here in the art room down the hallway here. And it was, different things were tried over the years, I'm told. More recently, we've been working with Riddleberger Brothers and our staff. And what we've uncovered is that what you see there, there's two boilers. We have three in there, so two of the three boilers have actually split and come apart. So what was happening, all your exhaust fumes are coming out of the boiler and you can see some of the hot spots on the insulation. So it was actually venting inside the boiler room. It should not have happened. The boilers are only, I believe, seven years old. We had Riddleberger come in, one of their extremely experienced welders. It's gotta be a very specific welder, came in and welded those. And since then, and some other things we've done, the smell is not there. We wanna be real clear that that's just a temporary fix. This is not something that's gonna last. These boilers, there needs to be some other fix or they need to be replaced. And so what I've done is, we've been working with one of the manufacturer of the boiler. We've pulled the boilers apart. We've sent the pictures they've asked for. So now we're waiting on a response from them to see what they're gonna do. Are they gonna replace them? Or are they gonna give some kind of fix? But again, these boilers should last 20 to 30 years. In my mind, it looks like some just manufacturing issue where they've actually separated. For now, they're temporarily fixed and the smell is gone, so that's the good news. And we're just, we're waiting back to hear from the factory, as you know, that can sometimes take a while. But I'm gonna keep pushing that. I can stop there if there are questions. Okay, thank you. I would mention that they are BRYAN boilers, B-R-Y-A-N. So that we wanna, we wanna make sure that Brian's gonna work with us on their products.
I assume that there's a warranty?
Yes, ma'am, there should be a warranty.
Okay, good.
Okay, next slide.
Wow.
At the middle school, same story. We've put up some basketball goals there that were needed to be replaced out on the blacktop. I know the middle school students are getting great use of those. Our staff has put together the outdoor seating that the middle school purchased back some time ago. And then at the bottom, you see the library floors that were replaced, the carpet with, it looks like wood, but it's actually LVT flooring that will last a whole lot longer and is very easy for custodial staff to clean. A great investment. We first used those at another school division I was in, and they've held up. It's a great product. So any place we can make those changes as we have money, I would definitely recommend doing that. Okay, on to some of the bigger items. What you see, the top two pictures and then one of the lower pictures, obviously, the top two are the, is the chiller outside of Waverly Yalla Elementary School. The chiller is not in great shape, to say the least. We put that out to bid. The bids came back. We've awarded it to Waco Contracting. I spoke with them the other day. They've been giving us submittals on the different coolers, chillers and items that we need. It's, we're gonna end up with a Dyken air-cooled chiller. The good news is we're gonna end up with one. The bad news is it may not be till next October because they're so far behind building these. These are not something that you get off a shelf. They actually have to build them. So I'd like to again give kudos to the staff that you have here. The guys have been limping that chiller along for several years now. And I've watched them do it in the short time I've been here. If it's not for them, I suspect we wouldn't have had AC and would have caused some issues. At Waverly Yalla School, may have been canceled. So they have great knowledge of the old machine and they're doing what they can. It may come a time, if it doesn't make it through next summer, there may be a cost of having to bring in a chiller on a flatbed tractor-trailer and you plug it in, and that's a monthly expense until we get the other chiller put in. Not a cheap endeavor, but maybe needed. Okay, there's another library floor. It was resurfaced over at Waverly Yalla. That turned out excellent. You should, if you've not, you should go in there sometime and take a look at it. Contractor did a great job with that. And then you'll see on several of these slides fencing. One of the things that Superintendent Graham was looking at is, of course, school safety. And certainly applaud her for that. So Waverly Yalla, you know, as you go in, the entrance between Waverly and the Alt Ed, and you can see the playground. Certainly don't wanna put kids in sight of the road, so one of the things we're doing there. The work should start on these fences pending materials arrive in February, where there will be a six-foot vinyl privacy fence blocking that from the road. So students aren't able to be seen from the road. And then, of course, the rest of it, the galvanized will be replaced and updated. Okay. At Madison Primary School, had to do some closeout things there. Some things were left undone by contractors, so we've had to push those. And some of the things we've done there, we've had some issues with some roof leaks around the HVAC on the roof where some penetrations were made. We have some tile that was coming up in areas in the school where fire doors at the pod, the tiles were splitting. And we had some issues with some of the breakers not wanting to stay set. So I've worked and I can't say enough good about Taft. They were very responsive to me. It's taken them some time to get some of the contractors back in here. But finally, that project, I would consider to be closed out. The last of it, or a few tiles that are left to do, and they're gonna do those Monday when school is out. So everything, I feel good about that project now. And you can probably close that out in your mind and feel really good about what you've done there. The other, the first box you see there, it was some HVAC control systems, and they were not functioning properly. We pushed, we pushed. We've got, we had Hobbs as associates and various other contractors. We've got that working now so that our staff can actually go into there. Instead of going into each teacher's room and adjust the thermostat up and down, you can go in there and do an adjust for the whole school if you want to. And that was, that was a, it was something that should have been working to start with. It was not working properly. That's now working properly. And of course, I wanna talk a little bit about the Fairground Road traffic lights. We've ordered the materials to upgrade those. As you know, those are solar and the panels are older. And when you have a couple of cloudy days, what we've noticed is that the lights won't work or they work intermittently. So we've ordered the panels and upgrades, so we're gonna upgrade those. And those should function a whole lot better on Fairground Road for our students to safely enter and exit as school ends and begins each day. So another good, good thing that's happening. And of course, the playground that was part of the renovation, I've been working with Mr. Coroner there. And the new playground on the 1-2, the 1-2 side, not K, will be, a lot of that's gonna be replaced and that's gonna be in May. Hopefully, if the materials stay on delivery as the contractor expects. Same thing at Madison Primary School, the K fencing. That playground's gonna be enveloped with a six-foot vinyl privacy fence. And then on the 1-2 playground, the same thing. It'll be a six-foot vinyl fence around the area you can see from the road. And then the rest of it will be new galvanized fencing put in. the rest of it will be new galvanized fencing put in. At the bus shop, you'll see up top, that was part of this fencing project. For some reason, the fence was not extended across from the Wetzel Middle School boundary down to the bus garage. So we've put in a short piece of fence there so that that's closed off like it should be. There'll be a gate there so that students can still go down because some of them do walk down to the bus shop area. So that was a good addition and a safety concern. What you see there is a new electrical service. The panel and everything had, was bought and was sitting there. We've gotten that put in. We had a contractor come in. We had to take down the power for a day or so, and now the bus shop has adequate power so that breakers are not kicking and things of that nature. And, you know, I'm sure in its time, that wasn't an issue, but with all the new equipment, tools, that sort of thing, you know, the power demands increase. So we've replaced that whole electrical service. Okay, and let's talk about the school board office. A lot of action going on there. One of the first things I want to talk about is the exercise facility that, you know, our students will be able to use as well as staff. That project, we got it bid out, and Taft Construction was the low bidder. Matter of fact, the only bidder on that project. They have ordered materials, and they expect to mobilize on January 30th and get that project started. It should be complete well before the end of summer. The only thing that may not be complete is the new HVAC unit that will go on top of the roof of that area, because again, you've got supply chain issues, as we all know how that is. Let's talk a little bit about the roof there. When I came, we start, Ms. Graham and I and others started talking about the roof and started looking at some of those reports. And the roof that was on there, of course, was very old, and then it was a puff roof, is what they call was put on. The puff roof started deteriorating. I'd never heard of a puff roof until I came here and had to research it. Basically, it's a spray-on kind of liner, if you will, to help cover up a failing roof. And in some cases, I understand it does really well. Some cases, it doesn't. In our case, it didn't do very well and started to disintegrate. So what I think happened was that puff roof was put on, and you have reports on file where there was moisture trapped below that on the roof anyway, so there was moisture trapped. So the only real solution for this roof was to pull the whole thing off and replace the roof. And we've, we're at 90, I'd say 98% complete with that, and it's going back with a TPO roof, which is the white that you see there. It is dirty because they're still working, but it's a great product. It's more reflective, more energy efficient, will result in better energy efficiency for the building, and has a 25-year warranty. The only thing left to do there is they're starting to do some flashing, and we'll close that project out. Very happy with Whitley Roofing, who was the contractor on there. We had four contractors bid it. They came out the low bidder. I've actually done work with them before, so I was pleased that they were the contractor that was awarded the contract. So great job on their part. I'm going to skip down to the mold plan, and I'm going to go back to facility study. Each school division is supposed to have a mold plan. We did not have one in here in Madison, and I have written that mold plan. It is on file if somebody happens to find mold. We've got a plan as required by the state of what we need to do to evaluate that and take care of it if complaints come along, or if we find things. So the facility study, I don't want to go into too much depth because I know Mr. Sheez has probably briefed the board a lot on that, where the division and the county worked together, and we procured the services of Bureau Veritas, which is a firm that does facility studies. Basically, they come out and they review all of our school facilities. They did the county facilities, and they look at MEP systems, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, the building envelope, life safety systems, our HVAC systems, everything you can think of. They took an inventory of all of our equipment, right down to VAV boxes that are up in ceilings. And what they do is, they put together a report, and it provides basically a more in-depth roadmap so that it will guide the board in capital planning decisions and our needs coming up in the future. One of the great things about this, it comes with some software that as we make adjustments is, let's say we put in this chiller, we can update that in this program, and this is a living document. It's not something you need to do again. The county graciously is paying for it, and now it's something, when I'm long gone, we're long gone, if we keep up with the big items, I'm not talking about painting a school, but, you know, the bigger ticket items. We've replaced this chiller, we put it in the system, it upgrades the facility condition index score. Ms. Graham, Ms. Crop and I met today to go over the draft reports. We have some things that we question, and we're going to have another meeting virtually tomorrow with one of the representatives from the company that did the study, suggest a few changes. And then we hopefully should be able to have some final reports. I would estimate no later than the end of February, but we have the draft reports now, and I'm very happy with how the company has done. And again, I've used those guys in the past, so I didn't expect anything but good work. Other items. There are a couple items up top that I know Mr. Eames mentioned to the board in closed session. I won't mention those, but one of those items, the biggest one is complete, was completed this week. And then the other smaller item that involves several of our schools will be completed by the end of January. So good news there. The picture you see is, the top picture is a sewer pump, and there's a small crane on the back of a truck that was taking it out. That sewer pump is probably four and a half feet tall and weighs probably 800 to 1,000 pounds. There are two of those pumps. If you're standing out in front of Wetzel Middle School and you're looking at the woods across, so you'll see that there's a light and some boxes there. Well, that pump is down the hill, those pumps are down the hill from there. And what they do, they serve as sewer pumps for Madison Primary, Wetzel Middle, and the high school. One of those pumps hadn't been working for some time, so we had to call in a contractor. We've pulled one of those pumps, taken it out, because all three of those schools were essentially, the sewer system was being run on one of those pumps, and that's what's happening now. The pump, we've ordered it, so they're actually having to rebuild that, or build that pump and get it to us. And I'm getting updates on that as we speak. But fairly sensitive project needs to, hopefully, we can get that pump in there soon, because if one pump fails, then we're in a position where we have to call in a septic tank pumper to pump probably several times a day.
Oh, my.
So, but that's, it should be finished soon. The refuse contract, that was ready and up to be for reprocurement. I've done that, and we've accepted that. It's done for one year with a possible renewal of four years. So that contract, we won't have to go out to bid for that for five more years. The same thing with the heat and oil contractor, just updated that. We've got bids back on that. That's updated. We're good for this year, and then we can renew for four more years. So you're good for five years on that. The schools, along with the county, worked with Mr. Wigley, Ms. Graham, Mooney Frazier, and put out to bid just a mowing landscaping bid to see what would come back, to see if we could possibly get some help at the county and school division with some of the mowing. As you can imagine, county staff and school staff, there's a few people, but in some of the time, some of the times, they get behind because of all the mowing, weed eating, and things that need to be done. I will tell you now, the mowing bid came back. It is not something that I think the county is going to do, and something, not something we're going to do. It was a good endeavor. It didn't yield much fruit. We may be looking at, we're having talks now, looking at some summer help, maybe some high school kids that have come back from college, or maybe even some high school kids that are graduating, that we can bring in in the summer to help get some of the mowing done. I think that's probably going to be the better avenue, and something that, you know, will provide some work for our students, and it'll be more cost-effective for the division.
Do you mean then just that your staff then do the mowing, plus the, plus the summer?
Yes, sir.
Is there any, do we have, do we have anything for landscaping? I mean, is that part of something that we do at all?
So we have, this past year, we came, the playgrounds had to be redone. So we worked with Chad Lor, and he received the contract to redo the playgrounds with the mulching. So he did all of that this summer for us. It was, it's been a while since it's been done with the amount that we needed on there, so this summer I don't expect that it will be nearly the endeavor, but we'll still need to top it off and do that. But, and then the gardens around the schools, they have diff, whoever does those, you know, we have a garden club, I think, at the high schools. I know somebody does those, so it just varies.
It's mostly volunteer stuff.
Yes, sir, as far as I know. The storage units, one of the things I was tasked with was to clear out the last storage unit. We've done that, so we're not paying any rental for storage units anymore. We're out of the storage business. And the Centos contractor did some negotiating there, and we are saving about $400, a little over $400 a month. We've changed some things in how that contract is executed, so that's saving the division around $400 a month with, between the uniforms and rugs and things of that nature. And then our environmental purchasing, what I mean by that is custodial purchasing. We've gone with a vendor that actually comes around. He meets with the custodians. He meets with assistant principals if needed. They take some monthly order, and then that order is delivered directly to that school instead of being delivered to the school board office, where it was then our facilities folks were taking it around to the schools as they need it and kind of doling it out. This way, it's at the schools, it's more efficient for them to use, and they're doing their own orders with what they need. I do review all of those orders to make sure nothing's out of the ordinary, and so far, that's, it's working great. Okay, I just wanted to share some work pictures, starting at the, going towards the bottom and going up. That's Mr. Benson there on the high, middle school roof. He's checking some of the HVAC units. The second picture, you see Mr. Armstrong, Mr. Ellsworth, and we've got Harris, not Harris, no, no, Taylor. It's Taylor there. And they were assisting Taylor, putting up some wireless access points so that they could shoot wireless over to the maintenance shop so that our staff over there could access the wireless network. Then you see a couple of the guys there taking down some trees that were too close to the school, getting in the way of some cameras and other things. And then there's Mr. Armstrong on top of the high school. Each fall, they go around after leaves have fallen and blow the roofs off, because if you don't, the leaves get into the roof drains, and then you cause leaks. So small attention to detail, these guys are pretty well on it. This is one of the examples that I talked about earlier, where county staff, Parks and Rec staff, school staff get together after the football season, and then we move the bleachers off of the field for the next season that comes up. They take down the goalposts so that then baseball season can start. And that's a huge endeavor. I was over there with those guys, helping with some of that, and then just watching in amazement at the work they do together. They've got it down to a well-old machine now. They've done it for so many years. We have a work order system in place. I'm not sure if the board is aware that it's called School Dude. It was formerly School Dude, now it's Brightly. It's a work order system where principals and assistant principals, designated staff at the schools, can go in and put a work order in. It comes to me, and then I assign the work orders out. We, once they're completed, we do completions, and we do closed work orders. That system is often working efficiently. We're starting to put actual cost in when the guys go out to put in parts, so that we can eventually, as we start doing this and using this more efficiently, we can run reports of exactly how much each school has cost us, and you name it, bathroom window or sink or whatever. So it's going to be a lot of data. It's taken some time to get going, but it's headed in the right direction. I'll tell you that since middle of July, they've completed 361 work orders. And that's, that sounds like a lot, but it's even more when you think about the preventative maintenance stuff that they do, like changing filters, building, for instance, working when they can down at the fieldhouse building, the lockers that they're building. So just a shout out to those guys who do a great job, and I can't say enough about the support that I get from everybody at the school board office and from this board, because it comes from, it comes from this board as well. And I'm just, again, very happy to be here. You've got a lot to be proud of, and a lot of good things are happening for Madison. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
I just had one quick one. Are there any more puff roofs?
No, sir. No more puff roofs. And like I said, I had no idea, and I've done facilities for a long time now. I never have heard of one, but I had to research it when I came here, and the guy's like, oh, it's a puff roof. I was like, okay, well, what's the real name of it? No, it's a puff roof. And sure enough.
I just wanted to say, welcome, welcome to you. Glad you're here. I think everybody, people I've talked to, I think we're very lucky to have you, and to thank you for coming to Madison, and thanks for your report tonight. Especially, I'm played by the fieldhouse especially. I was telling somebody, I've played there a long time ago, 30 years ago, and that fieldhouse is, was worse now than it was back then. And so the work you're doing there is really needed and good. And I was curious, you know, what, if you had to, I know I haven't been here very long, but if you had to pick one, one thing that we should be worried about as a board in terms of facilities, which on the spot, would you, what's the one big thing that we should be kind of in the back of our mind worried, worried about?
Let me, I'm trying to think.
You can get back if you want.
No, it's not put me on the spot. I'm trying to think of a way, I don't mind saying it. I look at it as more infrastructure. So for instance, the HVAC units at Waverly, there's some units on top of Waverly that need to be replaced. They're gonna, they're not in very good condition, but then you're talking about another million dollars there. Despite the renovation of the high school, you've got plumbing that's not draining because the drains, when it was done, were not replaced, and so they're old as a school, and they're starting to, they're starting to fail. And so you have, you have some water, water fountains that we've had to take off that we can't replace because we snaked them out, and the pipe under the school has collapsed. And so there are things like that, as I call infrastructure, that, you know, we can handle the cosmetic stuff. The infrastructure is what's costing, and that's where I think Madison needs to focus. And I think you're going to see a lot more in detail when we get this facility study done. When you get a chance to go through that, if you're a goof like I am over that stuff, I can just pour over it, pour over it, and it's very interesting to me, but it's like watching paint dry to some people. But it's infrastructure, Mr. Wingate, is what I would say.
Thank you. This was very informative.
Thank you.
Thank you as well. I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
The facility studies that you're going to do, are we doing that in conjunction with the county as well, or will this just be our study?
Now, we have, we'll have binders, I have, we'll have our own binders, and we'll also have it electronically for each school, school board office. And then the county will have theirs. So it's separate and by building.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And the other question I had, when you mentioned the boiler at the high school?
Yes, ma'am.
And that it had a certain smell to it, where is that boiler?
So if you're in the art room down here, you go out that door, walk down the stairs, and the boiler room's right there in that courtyard to your right.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you for everything that you're doing, too. And presentation was great.
Well, thank you all. I'm blessed to be here. As I said, it's, I'm working with great people and leadership across Central Office. It's amazing.
Thank you.
I have a question about, this really isn't a facility thing, and it might be a Betty-Jo question. The beautiful pickleball area is absolutely beautiful. Do we get to invite, like, other schools to come play pickleball with us, like we do football and basketball and?
It's called Mount, it has a name called Mount Air Court. It's open to the public from hours before to like, it's dark outside. So Brian Rees, who is a P.E. teacher at the, at middle school, he is super excited about this. This is high school, we have a pickleball tournament. Pickleball is actually one of the fastest-growing sports, and people are investing in a lot for this. We, our P.E. classes have been playing it for years here, but they put tables before in the gym. So now we have three pickleball courts in the gym, and then this door that opens and expands as the three more, so you can have six going at a time. Our kids love it. It literally was just finished, like, towards the ball. But it's awesome, it's great, really great.
Yeah.
So anyone can come, and of course, other schools can come, but we really want our community to enjoy it, because it's the.
It's beautiful.
It's like a wiffle ball. You play with a wiffle ball, and like, I don't want to think of.
It's a paddle.
Paddle.
It's a paddle.
A larger, bigger.
Table tennis on the ground.
It is.[1797.42]
Thank you, Dr. Timmons. That was very.
Again, thank you all, and thanks to the, the leadership and to the staff that does the work.
If we can do anything to support these endeavors, or you, or whatever, just let us know.
I, I, I think you're already doing it because we're getting a lot accomplished. Thank you.
Nice. All right. So our next item on the agenda is business information, and we will go to Superintendent Graham and our finance director, Tina Crop, on the latest budget process presentation.
Time to talk about the budget. So, we do have our work session next Wednesday at 5:00. In the auditorium, we'll arrange the tables more so we're facing each other, and that's where we can really delve into a lot of the things that I'll discuss tonight. Plus, we'll review the sheet that the staff members have been working on. And that's the sheet that the superintendent advisory, remember, there's three staff members from each school that work with the staff members within their buildings and with their building principals to put the staff needs on the sheets. So we'll be looking at those. Some of that is already on this, but this is the preliminary superintendent budget goals alongside of your board priorities, so you can see where the things that you had put together throughout the year, how that's falling into our budget. So the first section, the first thing on there is we would like to continue, remember, we got that 600, a little over $600,000 grant to fund Math Explorers for the past two years. That is ending, we knew it would, but we've been careful with the spending. Mary Beth Artali has done a great job thinking of working with teachers and planning programs where we can buy things ahead that will last for several years to continue it into the next few years. Where we would need to fund would be to pay the teachers to stay after. And this program, division-wide, it stretches K-12. High school really uses it just for after-school tutoring and getting extra homework help and such, but it's needed. They operate that three times a week. And so it's really great for our high school kids to get some help before they go to their athletic events or just to get the help because they stay after school. So it's really important for our kids. It's serving, some days, over 300 kids are staying after school. And then the Boys and Girls Club, this program ends, and then the kids are able, if they need to, to go to the Boys and Girls Club to stay even longer, to wait on their parents. But we would just need to fund the teachers to stay after school. So I think that's really important, and it's, it's meeting the needs of the students, it's meeting needs of parents that still need somewhere for their kids to go. And it's been fun. Some people have, I know that Mr. Mart's daughter was in the play they did. They stayed after school every day, and it was amazing. They're getting ready to do another one, so we'll let you know when the next play is coming around so you can go see the work these kids are doing after school. It's, it's really good. So the next thing, not really part of the budget, but we wanted to remind you, this is the last year of S.R. III. So important positions that are being funded by S.R. III right now is still that math interventionist at Waverly, the behavior specialist that splits their time between the primary school and Waverly. I mean, I know you've probably seen on the news a lot with schools struggling with behavior. It's just students that were out of school, these youngest students. There are several that really do need a specialist to help them transition as they are coming back to school full-time. The school counselor position that's split, again, between the primary school and Waverly, and then our technology support specialist, which was 100% needed because, if you remember, we went one-to-one overnight. And so we needed additional staff for that. And then the long list there you'll see is from the spreadsheet, so we'll talk more about these on Wednesday. But these are just some additional positions that have been requested by the schools. So the high school would like a new assistant principal, dean of students, and additional school counselor, which actually is a continuation of the one funded with S.R. II right now. Waverly would like the student success coach, which is also funded by S.R. II right now, an instructional assistant. The middle school would like an ag teacher to expand our CTE program into, see, Ms. Collier is smiling, to expand our CTE program into middle school, but very needed. Like, you saw how the students where are involved in the robotics program, how they get excited about that interest. In Madison, we definitely have the deep roots of students that would be very excited to have an ag program as well. The primary school kindergarten teacher, that's on there. That would be funded if kindergarten enrollment warrants the need for an additional teacher. And then second-grade teacher is a request as well. And then division-wide, there's a request for an additional ESL teacher. And then board member request would be for a CTE coordinator and a volunteer coordinator, which you've heard a little bit about, needs for volunteerism tonight. Next slide. Just to repeat, but that is, again, to show you one of your priorities with budget requests, again, CTE coordinator and the middle school ag teacher. And then, very important, retaining and keeping our staff members, the governor's, the biennium, the 10% raise. So this is the second half of that, 5% raise for all employees, increasing our coaching stipends to $500 per coach per season. That's something that we've talked about for many years now, doing more for our coaches. So that would be around $27,000 to give every coach an additional 500. We will not know about our, our health insurance renewal and whether or not we have an increase. That usually comes in mid-February, so we, we would like to cover that, though, for employees for that benefit because sometimes if your health insurance increase is so high, your raise is pretty much gone. So we'd like to cover that if possible. Currently, in the governor's budget is a 1% staff retention bonus, so that's meant for teachers that we currently have this year for employees if they come back to us for next year. That's a bonus that's to be paid out September 1st. Again, this is currently in the governor's budget. It still has to go through the general assembly. And then we would like to increase substitute pay. It's currently $12 an hour or $90 a day. We would like to go to $14 an hour or $105 a day.
Did you hear anything more about, I know you're working on the, the governor's thing about merit bonuses or?
I do, and I'm going to get to that in just a second.
Okay.
Next slide, please. There we go. Okay. For the facilities improvement priority that you have, we do have a need still, we've kind of been kind of chunking away at it of replacing our furniture because they do get, just like the buildings, they get worn out over time, so we have some more furniture we would like to replace, such as, and then capital improvements. I did not put a goal in here. Sometimes I list specific projects during this time of year, but because of the study that Dr. Timmons was just talking about, that's a study that the CIP committee really needs to delve into and then start making some priorities as a group. And so that's kind of why I put it like that, because we, we really need to get around the table with that study. And then the very last one, which the board priority was to promote partnership, I think that would begin with the volunteer coordinator position. And again, that was Mr. Wingate's request. So, next slide, more key points from the governor's budget. The governor has right now put in a 500, I'm sorry, $50 million for $5,000 performance pay bonuses. And right now, the only information we have about it is it would be a one-time bonus that they would be given to top-performing teachers in Virginia. So if you divide out the number of teachers in Virginia by $5,000, it comes to about maybe 11% of teachers in Virginia, some roughly around that area. And we know that it would be criteria set by the Department of Ed. So that's all we know so far, and that's currently just in the governor's budget. And then also an additional $50 million for lab schools. We are part of an application right now for a lab school in partnership with Culpeper, Rappahannock, and Orange, and Laurel, what is the community college that just went blank? Mountain Laurel, sorry, Community College. I wanted to say Laurel Ridge. This is not right. And then with JMU as well. And so it would be called the Piedmont Regional Pathway to Teaching Academy, and the ideal would be to train teachers, I mean, sorry, students that are interested in becoming teachers, beginning their junior year, get a lot of their coursework, their junior and senior year of high school, out of the way through the community college, be able to, and also go around to our different school divisions. If we want to show off like our ag department and really get kids in to see that they're interested in that career field, like, travel around, so use all of the school divisions that are part of the application to give kids different lab schools of interest, and then work with a college, a four-year college, where students can then transition and finish their coursework and hopefully return within two years to work in our classrooms, like at the elementary level, you know, wherever age appropriate, but to be able to get them back to our classes as soon as possible. That's just in the application process.
Is that, would that be like an online thing for, for the students or?
No, not necessarily. No, it would have to be like hands-on to get some teaching experience.
How, I mean, would they travel somewhere?
The Daniel Center, Dr. Jones.
So we'd bus students there?
Yeah. But ideally, also get out into the schools, the different schools. So that's to be determined. The application has been submitted. And then the last slide is just our next steps, which are coming very quickly, is we like to debrief. When I say we, I mean Dr. Jones and Mrs. Crop and myself will meet with the teacher advisory next Tuesday, go over the list with them one more time, see if there's any more needs. We've made our way so far to the faculty meetings at the high school and at the primary school. We have two more to go to, just trying to make sure they understand. You can really tell us what it is you need. And then we have our work session next weekend. That is it with the budget so far. I will let you know, the first run of the superintendent draft budget, if you want to call it that, will not include like the slew of positions. It'll just have a lot of our basics. Like, we really want the raise for everybody, the 1%, like, things like that, and then we'll build from there. So you'll know a total what we're dealing with already before things start getting put in because total goes up fast.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Our next item is the calendar committee. And gosh, we are thinking about next year's calendar already.
Already. So this, the calendar committee, you all actually do not have to approve this information. This group of fine individuals volunteer their time to talk, and they're getting ready to meet, I think, in two weeks to work on the beginnings of a draft. They go back to their staff, all the people that they work with, get feedback. They call in parents that work with their school, get feedback. So they'll be bringing a calendar to, calendar to you. Usually, they try in February to bring the first draft. So we shall see when you approve, hopefully by March. Yes. Okay.
One thought, suggestion. In accordance with our priority to engage the community and promote parental involvement, could we, did we, or can, couldn't we invite parents to be on this committee?
They do. This is our staff members that are on it, and from there, they go ahead and do like a few drafts, and then they invite parents in for feedback. And instead of just starting like the raw calendar, there's things that go on there anyways, like the number of days that we're in school and things like that. They do that basically off of the calendar we have, and then they'll bring parents in for feedback, and they'll be part of the committee.
But I wonder, I mean, I understand that, but I wonder if, if you had people in there from the very beginning, a couple, I mean, obviously, they're probably parents on this, on this committee, but just to have that non-schoolteacher educator thing, to have them in the beginning, I wonder that would be, might be helpful and be interesting to think about. Could we ask for a couple volunteers, maybe?
You can ask for a couple volunteers.
My parents won't thank me probably for suggesting that, it's more time, but it might be some people who would be going to do it. Thank you.
Any other questions about the calendar?
Our next item is, we have three business approval items. The first one is V.S.B.A. Code of Conduct. This is something each of us signs. The Virginia School Boards Association provides a code of conduct for school board members that lists, that includes a list of 12 agreements regarding specific board behaviors and responsibilities. It has been requested that notification be submitted to V.S.B.A. when board members have adopted and signed the code. So we usually do this in January of every year because we reorganize our board. And so that is the code of conduct listed there, linked there. Anybody have any questions? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the V.S.B.A. Code of Conduct.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Okay, we will all sign that at the end of the meeting. Don't run. Okay. Our next item is, the recommended action is to remove the identified list of books containing sexually explicit content from the MCHS library. Do you want to share anything, Mr. Wingate?
Sure. Thank you. We've been talking about this for a while, not really new to anybody, and the school boards have the excerpts for, for a while. Just, just a quick reminder, not very long, but this is, we, we approved the, the board policy last month that said that we wouldn't have explicit, sexually explicit material in schools, not based on any personal opinion, but based on the state of Virginia's definitions, and so we approved that. And so I went back and screened all the books that we identified to look to see if it met that, that criteria. And so these books here, the 21 books here on the list, I think do clearly meet that criteria. Now, somebody said tonight that, you know, maybe, something like these books might contain sexually explicit stuff. You know, if you, I've been cautious about kind of sharing them in public because I think they're kind of scandalous in some ways, and, but if you've seen the excerpts, there's no doubt that they're sexually explicit. And I don't think it's, I don't think anybody could really argue the fact that they are, that they're not sexually explicit by, not by my definition, but by the code of Virginia's definition. And so those are the books I identified. Some people have said that this is ideological or discriminatory, and this is not, as I reviewed the books in the library, you know, they were certainly books that I wasn't crazy about in terms of the content, but, you know, I have no, no desire or intent or goal of trying to remove those. I was just trying to meet the code of Virginia standard for sexually explicit. Other stuff is, is people's own, own personal desires and things, but these books met that definition very clearly, so wanted to, to make the move on that. And, you know, the bottom line, I think, to me, is just it allows us to protect children and parents, protect children. If you, if you, if you try to have a 14-year-old child go into a rated R, a rated NC-17, a rated X movie, which these books certainly would be if they're put right in, right into it, you know, the book was faithfully translated into a movie, these, they would certainly be those ratings, whether it be R, or NC-17, or X. You couldn't have a 14-year-old go in there. And, and allowing those, those, that sort of thing in the library where children, you know, can freely peruse those things seems to me to be a, a failure of the board to protect our children and a failure to allow parents to protect their children. So that's, that's really the idea. The whole thing, whole thing came down to me is that it's just, it's just a way to protect children from, from those sorts of things that meets the code of Virginia. This policy has been reviewed by the legal review a couple times, and I think it meets that intent of the policy. That is my goal.
Anybody have any questions on the board? Okay. So we will, the recommended action is to remove those identified list of books containing sexually explicit content from the MCHS library, and I will entertain a motion to do so.
I'll make a motion to remove the, the listed books from the Madison County School Board.
I will second.
And we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no.
I'm going to abstain, and I'd like to give a rationale for it. First of all, I've been doing more reading on book banning and book censoring, and, you know, it's, it's a current thing that probably people are looking at nationwide now because the books are, have changed, and what we see in our libraries is, is different now than perhaps it was a few years ago. But, I mean, these things have been, these things have been going on for a long time. And when I looked at the excerpts, and I appreciate the fact that you did so much work on those, I totally agree. So I can't vote and say, let's put them, let's leave them, because I don't agree on leaving some of them. The way I looked at it is some of them are sexually violent, any of those. I have no qualms about, you know, if it's sexually violent, and some of the things are against the law. They just are. So for those, I just said, well, those I truly do understand, and we do have an obligation to our children. Some of them are on the. Some of them are on the borderline. Strangely enough, though, when I was watching The Today Show this morning, they had a writer that I'm very familiar with, Judy Blume, and those of you that have been around for a while, remember Judy Blume? And her book, It's Me, Are You There God? It's Me, Margaret, was banned for a very long time because of the content that was in it. And I guess you could argue that it was, I don't even know that you could make the argument that it was sexually explicit. But they're making a movie out of that now. Excuse me. I do know as well that the General Assembly is presenting, someone is presenting a bill which is, would allow certain books to be put in certain sections, the way that we talked about at the very beginning. So that, you know, the parent that would be willing to have their children read them, I mean, some of them, I don't have a problem taking out. And so I'm at a quandary about how to vote. Because I do agree on some, I don't agree on others. So I'm going to abstain, and I just wanted to let anybody know why I was going to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. So I think the motion passes because it's three to one abstention. So we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. And that's to choose a school board retreat date. These have typically been on Saturday mornings after the January board meeting at some point. And I did not do my homework and look at my calendar before coming here tonight, and we were told to do so, so Ms. Graham, I'm sorry. Does anybody have a date that they would like to throw out that works for them? So we have our budget work session, the 18th, which is already another night out. The following week would be the 28th. I'm unavailable the 4th of February. The 11th of February is the weekend before Valentine's Day. I don't know if that matters to anyone.
We're looking at a Saturday?
Yeah, we typically do retreats on a Saturday morning.
On a Saturday, okay. And what month do you want?
It's up, it's up to the will of the board. Ms. Graham, is there a time?
Is everyone available on February 4th? Because that's still working on our budget. So that could give us time for that and time for you all to look at your priorities.
I'm not available on, yeah, February is really hard for me.
Okay.
I'm available February 25th.
I was going to say, what about the 25th?
I can do the 25th of February.
That works.
Mr. Sheed isn't here. So I have no idea if it works for him. The February 25th work for the four of us?
And you'll have another board meeting before then? So if there's, you know, a major conflict, then you can adjust.
Okay. All right, let's, so 8:30 in the morning?
8:30, that's good. 8:30 to 11:30.
8:30 to 11:30. Does that work for everybody? Okay, so let's go back. Over here, I know, I'm surprised we did that that quick without talking about it prior to. So we'll need a motion to add that calendar item to our school board calendar. So if somebody could make that motion, that we will have a school board retreat on February the 25th.
I make a motion that we have a retreat on February the 25th, 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 p.m.
Second.
Location to be determined.
Here? High school cafeteria or here?
In here. If the auditorium's available, we'll just stay in here. We'll need public in case people, space, just in case. Public.
Only.
Great, wouldn't it?
Wouldn't that be nice? You can bring the appetizers.
I'll bring doughnuts.
You gonna be there?
Okay, so we'll, we will, we have a motion and a second, right? Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, no. Okay, so we will add that to our calendar items. And lastly is our reports from school board members, student representatives, and our superintendent. So Karen always goes to the left, so I'm going to go to the left, Mr. Wingate.
I have two things just to talk, just mention to the board about, just come to initiative ideas. I've been talking to Ms. Graham about those things on the budget thing I'm interested in is that volunteer coordinator, Mr. Oates was talking about that earlier. I think it's got a lot of potential for student learning. So I really would like to make a push to get more parents, grandparents, citizens in the classrooms to do kind of that personal interaction. So I've talked to Ms. Graham about is hiring a volunteer coordinator or making it a part-time thing, additional thing, going to figure that out. But I would love to really make a push for that to increase volunteers in the classroom. I think it has a potential for real power. And we're not, you know, ideally, we could hire 40 more people, you know how to do that, but I don't have money for it. But volunteers who want to be there and who have a real vested interest in it might be a powerful way. So I'm really interested in that. And the second thing is I'm interested in, the new committee is thinking about character education and what that looks like, and really trying to find some focus for that, for character education, kind of K through 12. And so I hope the committee will take a look at that and figure that out. That's all I have.
Welcome. I should have done this earlier. Oh, my gosh. Sorry.
It's okay.
I'm new in this role. You're new. So we welcome Greg Martz to our board for our first board meeting. I feel like you've been here because you went to the conference with us, so sorry. Welcome, Greg.
Thank you. Glad to be here. I have nothing to report because I just got my assignments and what I'm going to be reporting on. But it's been great learning some things, going through some conferences, and already being in contact with some parents and some teachers and some administrators and getting some ideas and some volunteers that actually want to do some stuff that Chris and I have talked about at the convention. So that was, it's been nice. It's going to be a part of helping Madison move forward.
Nice. Welcome. Thank you. Ms. Allen, do you have anything?
I have a couple of things I just wanted to bring to the board's attention and the public. Last night, there was a dedication for Mike Sacra, a plaque that was presented before the wrestling match. And I had never seen a wrestling match before, so I was quite taken with it. It was, I've never seen such enthusiasm and people pulling their shirts off and pulling these things up and down. I'm like, are they supposed to be doing that? Anyway, it was a lot of fun. Please don't put that in the newspaper. Please. But it was a lot of fun. But more than anything, the fun that I had watching the students with the wrestling was the honor that Sam Woodward brought to the Sacra family. And I've seen the plaque, and I wish all of you and hope you will see it at some point because it's beautiful. It's really memorable and meaningful to all of us. But anyway, I did want to mention that. The other thing I wanted to mention is it just so happened that last night, the kindergarten program was going on at the same time. And so I walked up here to see the kindergarten program, and it was, I'd forgotten how funny they are. I mean, they were out there dancing, they were having a really good time. If you want to lift your spirits, and you're watching them and you're thinking, I wonder if his mother saw that? Because it's just a lot of fun to watch. So anyway, those were two things that I did, just to bring to the community's attention. The other thing that I did want to say particularly to you, Nita, I know Mr. Mitchell passed. I don't know what's wrong with my voice tonight. Mr. Mitchell passed, and I know you had a lot to do with the dedication of the ball field for Mr. Mitchell. And I'm so glad that it happened before this happened because it was, I think that was one of Billy's great days. It was a beautiful day, and I know you had a lot to do with that, as well as Red Jenkins. And I know you'll pass that on to Red, but still, you did. So kudos to you for making that happen in honor of him.
Yeah, Red Jenkins texted me today, and it is bittersweet, but we are so thankful, so thankful that that got done before, before this happened. And I read on Mr. Mitchell's son's Facebook today that what we did here in the auditorium, and they're having a private memorial, what we did here in the auditorium and on the ball field was his celebration of life. And it was so awesome that, that he was here. I know, twice tonight. What have y'all done? That it was so awesome that, that that happened. He was an amazing person. We can only be a little bit like him. The world would be a better place. Take care. Mr. Reese?
Thank you very much. First off, I wanted to just say one more thing about Aliyah Ailer, the Senior of the Month winner. I was actually really lucky to get class president because she's, like, she's awesome. She's done, she has so many leadership positions at the high school. And when I learned that Senior of the Month was going to be an award that was given out this year, there's, we have a lot of great seniors at the high school, and she's really the only one I thought of that was definitely going to get a Senior of the Month award. So I just wanted to congratulate her on that. She's probably, like Ms. Wyndham said, one of the reasons the Winter Wonderland was so successful and probably one of the reasons that it could be a continuing staple of the Christmas season here at the high school. So, yeah, she's awesome. So I just wanted to say something about that. And also, they aren't here anymore, but the BattleBots thing was really awesome. I enjoyed that. I remember doing that in STEM class, or some form of it, a long, long time ago, so it definitely brought back some, some middle school memories. Not, I know. But honestly, with the whole, like, you know, like pandemic, it's definitely feels like a while ago. Let's see, what else? Strong start to the new semester. My bag is loaded down with homework. Can't say that's a bad thing. Got some difficult classes, got to learn somehow, so that's great. And boys' basketball is currently ranked ninth in the state. So congratulations to them. And I think that'll do it on my end. Thank you all very much.
If you haven't seen, if you haven't seen, our student representative is the emcee at the high school basketball games. It's fun to watch him in action there as he does the free throw, the half-court shot, and introduces the team, and you do a really good job. And so it's, thank you for doing that.
Seen little excerpts on Facebook. I don't know if you know that you're on Facebook, but there's some videos out there. And I do want to just say, anytime that you want to say something, when I say, "Board, do you have any questions or comments?", you're part of this board. So if you wanted to say that to Aliyah when she was here, or to the BattleBot kids when they were here, please jump in, okay? You don't have to wait until the end to, you don't have to sit here and do nothing and say nothing until the end, okay? So I welcome you to participate in our conversations, okay? Any other board members? So I just have a couple quick things. I wanted to remind my colleagues that there's a V S B A Legislative Conference, January the 30th and the 31st in Richmond. And on the 30th, the governor presents some stuff about his budget and some of his priorities. It's a good conference to go to. The following day, and I think it's a Monday and a Tuesday, right? The following day, there's some options to go either visit with your legislator for the morning. There's also a new chairman and vice chairman training that is available. And then there's also new board member training on that Tuesday. So I encourage you guys, if you want to participate in any of that, I'm going to go. I'm going to have Ms. Patterson get me my ticket. I want to go Monday to the legislative thing, and then Tuesday to the new, now that this has happened, to the new chairman training. So I encourage you guys to get together, and we can go do those things. And the retreat is February the 25th. We just voted on that at 8:30 in the morning here. And I have a prep board meeting next week. So that's all the information I have. Thank you, guys. I am humbled and honored by your vote for me for chairman. Thank you. Thank you for your nomination. And I hope I did okay. And do we need to vote for an adjournment? Oh, oh, I'm forgetting the most important person.
Not most important, but.
I told you to tell me what I'm doing wrong.
I am getting ready to say something about our most, some of our most important people.